Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
So, the minutes seem very simple for last meeting although I wasn't here.
I think we have to, we can't vote on them until we have quorum anyways.
But we can look at them.
Right, but we can look at them. Okay.
And then. You and Dennis were both here last time, but I was not, so do you wanna fill me in on the Drun thing?
Sure, everything looks great, um, except that it had the wrong town on it. If you roll out that plan right there.
Okay.
And Frank was here too, so we can just. So this is Caruth, um, this is, this is like Brooks Village Road, I'm gonna call it, but it's Caruth really. And I'm gonna ask you to take that one back with you.
What's the Mylar?
Ah, here he is.
There he is.
Yeah. Actually.
So he, I'll see, and they put that, um, he's creating two lots.
This one?
This, this one.
Eight and seven.
Eight and seven.
I knew you were here.
Keeping this.
This, and actually this up here.
Yeah.
Most likely we're gonna be building lots.
And I live right here.
Who set them up? Yeah, I got the right one.
That's why I bought the land really, so I could keep this vacant.
Right, yeah, so you just have some buffer. And so.
Go through Brooks Village Road, go through that little intersection.
This goes through to Phillipsen Road. Pease Apple Farm is.
Yeah.
I never read somewhere.
So this piece is probably.
You always answer your phone.
The part we're talking about is lot sevens right here.
And are you in between?
Nope, I'm right here.
Who's in between there?
Between there, these two people.
Grimley?
Yep, Grimley and, uh, Wakefield.
Still come on Thursday.
So yeah, this is like turned sideways.
He should because people.
So is this, is this Route two A?
Nope, this is.
Cut him down halfway.
Old North County Road, no, this is a dead end. Route two goes right here.
You don't cut him down halfway.
This is a dead end now. And this is Queen Lake Road, this goes to Phillipsen. This is Phillipsen Road that goes to, um, what do you call it, App, um, who's down there? Uh, right here is, uh, this is town line Phillipsen. Pease is right here.
You have to go right through that little section, it's right there on the left.
It's down through Brooks Village.
Brooks Village Road, take a left. Stay, no, go straight, go straight through.
Brooks Village Road turns into Caruth.
I see.
Right there is Brooks Village.
Yeah.
When you get to here, it turns into Caruth. When you get back into Phillipsen, it turns into Brooks Village.
You're just going straight?
Okay, I got you.
Straight through, straight through there. And it's right on the left after.
Sorry you had to explain yourself, I know you were here last meeting, so, yeah, okay, I got it.
And so we went through the checklist and we, we had everything, but we, let's just go through it again real quick.
Yeah.
Um, and the only problem was.
You guys wanna copy down there?
Beck's already done this one. Um, the only, the only issue was that it said, um, the town of Portland on it.
I got you.
Alright. So all lots, uh, got a qualified way.
It's Caruth. Yeah, seven and eight is Caruth.
All have adequate footage. Yep.
Yep.
Bottle access, this the main road, lots have acreage correct. That's the middle, I know, we have all the copies of Form A, all the copies of the A and R. Is it a description of the lot? Yep, okay, description, copy of the plans, identification by name of owner, we know it has it. Just, undistated approval, we know it has that. Zoning classification, I can see it from here in the upper right. Remaining frontage, so there's no, there's no lots that are nonconforming. Just, uh, notices of zoning, board is not applicable. Name of the butters are on there, distance nearest monument is on there.
No.
Yep. Location of existing buildings is on there.
Oh yeah, that.
Location of any easement, there's none. Right, there's no easements, right?
Utility easement, it does show one easement.
Oh, it does, yeah, and there's, it's on there, okay.
That's just electrical?
Yes.
Yep, six hundred, right, created two lots, checks there? What's the check number?
Three oh five.
I make a motion, we approve as submitted.
One second.
All those in favor? I have it. Alright.
And we collected the check last week, so.
Yep.
Just need to sign them.
Yeah, we have them.
Motion, we, you wanna take a vote on the minutes?
We're gonna do this.
We could go to the minutes at the end.
Yeah, we're gonna do this gentleman here. So let's, um, sign these. So if you give them all down to Dennis. Come across this way.
Put the right day, Dennis.
Yeah, put the right day, right year.
Should we do the Mylar first?
Yeah. Bit of Sharpie?
Ten eight.
Laurie, I'm just gonna put this over there.
Yep.
See you tomorrow, huh?
Yes. Am I crossing my fingers saying a prayer and praying over your taco?
Don't do that.
Okay.
It's unlucky lot.
I haven't been involved for twenty years, so I don't know.
Remember one time we couldn't sign it because nobody had a pen.
I'll just lift the edge for when we get to it.
Been that long, Bill?
You've been.
Pretty close.
Damn.
Yeah, I was on it for nine years.
So, well, I noticed that Bill only submitted a check for two hundred.
I know, we'll correct that.
Okay.
If you want to run it.
Plus.
Oh yeah. I'm gonna take up golf pretty soon.
Are you?
Yeah.
You might as well. He can't seem to do hockey.
I went fishing just before I come.
He did. Catching.
Now I gotta go home and clean.
Probably cut some stuff.
I go out and go, but, don't worry.
I'll do it.
By the dam.
Do you give a pass?
Be on the first. Good, sorry.
Which is good, I remember as a kid I used to eat that.
You haven't get that?
Isn't that get right there?
Sweet.
Yeah.
For the next, I, I.
Alright, I got you.
Still looking at my truck.
Great.
Still loving that truck.
Oh yeah?
Yeah.
Good.
Couple little things here and there.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
Hydraulic line.
Perfect.
Stuff like that.
No, you just keep it right on property.
Someone doesn't like the pens.
Putting your own trees. Your lines.
Some, yep. Cable lines, all kinds of stuff. Had Georgian today, doing a bunch of stuff, but he goes seventy-five.
I watch him make today.
Good, no complaints, busy, crazy busy.
Still going?
Still be from yesterday, yeah, so fourteen, fourteen.
So you have a hard start and then.
The fourteen, well, for them, I have lots.
Begin with the intention of, um.
Like my work doesn't end until probably Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
And then I'm done. So much.
Go to Florida?
No, I gotta do a diner and I have no job. Cause we own the restaurant too.
Which restaurant?
Dennis.
You do.
Where you been?
Yeah, I guess I knew that.
Yeah.
Forgot about it.
Yeah.
One more.
Busy, busy.
I'm always busy.
Crazy, crazy.
Yeah, we went to by accident. This is your last one.
You have a copy of this, Bill? Or did we have them all?
You have them all, okay. Yeah, girls are playing cards.
Oregon, or Eden, Pat?
Uh, yes.
Or Batty? When they play, Bitcher.
It's like Canasta. Fine depth.
Really?
Right?
Don't complicate it to me. Doesn't sound like some Batty shit you're doing.
So Bill, you wanna, um, just come up and show us what you're doing here?
Trying.
Just wait for Kristoff to finish.
So you get Mylar back.
Should I just take this right now?
Yep, I get these.
And you take all four of them?
And I'll take care of everything else, yep.
Wow, sincere.
So you want?
I'm good, yeah.
Good.
Well, thank you all very much.
Yeah, okay, Brooks Road.
This lot was, uh, previous. And what we're gonna plan on doing is putting a road in here.
I'm good.
Didn't have enough.
Thank you.
I have a hundred feet with the, uh, radiuses. So we pushed it over. And, um, with the frontage here, it's more than enough, I believe.
Nineteen thirty, that's exactly a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good night all.
Yeah, that's what we're doing this lot.
Alright, so this is the lot. This lot was already here, you're actually just modifying it to take this radius? Or is this lot being cut out of here?
It would never really divide it. It's just.
So this is existing.
Yep.
This is the, we want the road.
Yep.
The hundred foot with the radius.
Yep.
This lot was part of, cause this is you as well, right?
Yep.
Was this lot all one and you created this?
Right.
Okay. So you're creating a lot of five.
Yep.
Alright.
So when you say a road, you're just saying a, a, a future access to backland?
Hmm.
Just.
More than that.
That'll be a different meeting.
But it's nothing right now.
No, but it's in the planning stages, but it isn't this far yet.
But what you, okay, so it, it doesn't, for our purposes tonight, it doesn't matter if we know what that is.
Right, as far as I'm concerned. Will you agree?
No.
We're just looking at the lot.
Yeah, okay.
If he plans on doing a subdivision here, that has nothing to do with, or a house out here somewhere. Fire chief, we'd have to look at distances and all that stuff, you know?
We haven't really figured it out yet, it might be a cul-de-sac, it might be a loop road.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
There's lots of factors.
Okay. Do you have other frontage, Bill, around here going with this?
You go what?
Well, if you're creating a nonconforming frontage here.
No, it's here, it's one lot.
No, this is conforming.
No, no, it's, it's all one lot.
It's all one lot, Frank.
Yeah.
Sixty something acres here.
The other one, have you shoot yourself down because you only have a hundred feet? Does that from? Here to here?
We're gonna be able to do a radius here, but there's gonna be some extra land here. Actually.
But this is already a lot, isn't it?
Yes.
It only has a hundred fifty foot frontage.
Right, you can't make a radius there.
So you're gonna have one radius, not two?
No, no, gonna be two, cause this is a hundred feet.
What I'm getting at is.
Does that make this, I don't know, that's a hundred fifty feet.
This is already a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Okay, but down a road, if you're gonna make subdivision or what have you, you shoot yourself in the foot if you don't have enough of a radius. Because you, you have enough here, but.
Alright.
You can't make this nonconforming. Alright, the road.
I don't wanna write on it.
I mean, I don't know what to do, I mean.
The road is fifty feet, right?
Yeah.
So we're gonna put fifty feet with a radius. Which is legal. And there's gonna be a piece of land left here.
Right, there's more than enough room for the road, the hundred feet's not required.
There's a hundred foot.
All that's required is.
Well, eventually, this twenty-five feet is gonna join this piece.
Yeah, I just want you to shoot yourself in the foot.
No, you can't.
Okay.
I mean, fifty foot is, uh.
Got it? We're only here to discuss.
We have no choice, because this one is already existing.
This lot.
You own this anyway, don't you?
I do own it.
You used to.
Used to. I knocked you over first.
You don't, oh, you don't own this lot currently?
Not as of last Thursday.
Alright, I'm just gonna go through the checklist. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
All lots, so there's one lot being created, the check needs to be for a different amount. Did Laurie already speak to you?
I did not, because I didn't know exactly. So it's three hundred versus the two hundred, correct?
Yeah, it's three hundred dollar check.
What do you wanna do?
Do you have a checkbook with you?
No.
I can collect it.
Bring it tomorrow.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm gonna see you anyway.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, okay. Alright, all lots have bought a qualified way? Yep, all lots have adequate frontage.
I don't see that on here.
What?
For lot five.
Adequate frontage?
Yeah.
It's got a hundred and thirty-one and nineteen, so it's got a little over a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
Right, right here, those two, that's the monument, that's the permanent, that's the rod, so they separate.
Okay, I got you, alright.
Okay.
So yes?
Yes, bottle access, it's on the main road, all lots have adequate acreage.
It's RA one, so it's one acre.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we have four copies of Form A, I know that, the A and R, just stamped. Yeah, received. Copy of the description of the lot is attached, I saw that. Copy of plans, identification of owner by owner. On the bottom right. Of approval under subdivision, let's make sure it says, says Templeton? It's on there, zoning classifications are on there. He's not creating any nonconforming lots.
Nope.
Notice of decision of zoning, there isn't any. Names of the butters. I'm gonna say yes. Distance to nearest monuments there. Location of all existing buildings. Are there any buildings here?
Hmm, right over here.
Yeah, everyone worry. Um, okay, and then the location of any easements.
How did I know?
No utility easements. Not applicable, the fee is three hundred. So Laurie, you're gonna take care of that piece of it.
Where did I get to two hundred?
I don't know. Online maybe, maybe something on what site is off?
I'll make, I'll accept the motion to approve as submitted.
I'll make a motion that we accept the plan as submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All set? Is this your Mylar in here?
I believe so.
Yeah, it is, I just wanted to keep it.
See.
Which way you wanna go? You wanna go this way first?
I'm with Dennis, Dennis always puts the D on there.
Here we go.
I'm gonna go this way, like from the mid one. I just need the Form As back, I need the packets back.
Yep. Excuse me. What do you think, Bill?
What do you mean, what do I think?
That's a loaded question for anybody.
Maybe you won't tell us.
I'm gonna take up golf. Go fishing, that's it.
About time.
Getting complicated to do anything today.
You got that right.
You have extra copies, I'm just gonna quote with the Mylar.
No, I get a signed copy.
You get the Mylar and everything tonight. I'm sorry, not doing my job.
He kept four, or did he take one of the four home with him?
We have always kept the four since I've started doing this. If you wanna sign a fifth one for him.
You wanna assign one?
Yeah, that's why.
We should grab the fifth one and sign it for him. So when you build the road, you're gonna go tight to this other side, that's why you cut that radius.
There's no other way of doing it.
Yeah, makes sense. You have to go that way because the other property ones will be followed. Do you wanna just look at the minutes, Dennis?
A little spoiling, it's a good shirt.
Well, we, yeah, I try.
Yeah, we like the spoiling.
You have first child syndrome.
So who's chairman, you wanna?
No, Kirk Machetti is chairman and Charlie is vice chairman and Tim is the clerk. Unfortunately, none of them were able to make it. And I'm probably just the most obnoxious to make it go through faster.
In a good way.
In a good way. But you actually, all, all the officers didn't make it since evening. Yeah, no, I've been really happy, except a couple, who had a guy come out, blew a hydraulic line inside, inside the, 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 uh, boom. That was.
Okay.
I just had him come on to it, I didn't even bother dealing with it myself. Cause there was no way I was gonna be able to. But you still use that mechanic, okay? Do you even use him at all, everything's your best? The mechanic, you got it? No? He's pretty good, huh?
He figured it out.
Mylar's on the inside, so it doesn't protect it.
I use it for everything, but it breaks, I use it for crackball.
This, this little situation is.
Yeah, yeah. Can I do a rock?
If I need him, I recall him.
No. I'll stay up in this town morning.
Thank you, good luck. Have a good night. I make a motion to.
I'm kinda outside, I was hoping if I could just ask a question, but I would have to be outside of your meeting, cause I'm not, not.
She doesn't have to be outside though, because we can't actually have, answer questions outside meeting, but you know what, we're good new business, we'll ask you to ask your question. I make a motion, we accept the minutes as Laurie has them.
Yep, I'll second that. Can I abstain?
Yep, you can.
Can.
Okay.
We have, uh, quorum and there's four people here, but you can abstain.
Okay.
Um, and I second the motion. All those in favor? Three yeses, one abstain.
You'll probably have to sign those, John.
You want me to sign these?
Yes, please, uh, did I give you a blank?
I have a blank, yep.
But does it say draft on it?
Nope, it does. I mean, yes.
Oh yeah, it does say.
That one Kristoff, if you'd hand that to him.
Any new business?
Hey. I'm, uh, Chris Langin, homeowner at seven forty-one Baldenville, and I'm just coming to get some clarification on, um, my wife and I with summer were like, we're gonna sell Christmas wreaths this Christmas. And out of our own ignorance, I didn't know that there was sort of a lengthy process to kinda go through. So I, what I'm looking to do, and what we've already had started and put some orders in, it's probably not even a thousand dollars worth of inventory, but just sell on the last lot on Baldenville Road on the right-hand side, the White House before. And the Harris, uh, business there, um, just in my, I'm sorry.
Just to, just last house Baldenville Road, right-hand side, which way are you going?
I'm sorry, coming down Baldenville from here. So if you were coming down towards the center of the blinking light, um, that White House, it's the old Gruken House, I don't know if that makes any.
The beautiful house with the nativity in it.
Which house is it? I'm sorry, are we on Baldenville Road, like on the way to the high school?
At the very end.
Yep.
Just before you get to the end.
To the center, towards Baldenville Center.
School Street?
Oh, okay, I know where you are, okay.
Like my backyard is Baldenville Elementary.
I know where you are, yeah, I know where you are.
So, um, we have a, an enclosed garage, a catio, that we were just gonna plan to just do it out of that, like it's like a screened in, you know, roofing up, putting anything up. Um, and just simply kind of sell out of there. Um, I got like EIN number and I had put on September ninth, I put the application in inventory. Um, and unfortunately it kinda got moved around, I guess Mr. Hank wasn't around for a while, so I just kinda got word this past week that I would have to go before the planning board. So it was one of these things that, um, and I do, I don't know if you wanna see pictures, I don't know if that would help with anything, um.
What did, what did he say in his letter that, what made it have to go before us?
Village.
Huh?
Cause it's a village district in all businesses by minor home occupation is by permit?
Yep.
By special permit or?
By planning board.
I think it does, because we did the, remember, we did the canoe one.
Mm-hmm, I remember now, that was over at, uh, Cross and.
Just up above Cumberland's.
Yeah, Cross and Duncan Donuts.
Home street.
The kayak's just under allowed, uses allowed by right in the, A retail sales with site of plan approval from the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So that, that's obviously the house, but that is kinda the location where it would just sort of be out of.
Seasonal lot.
Yeah, just, well, and when I say seasonal, I mean like four weeks, like it would be the week of Thanksgiving, um, until.
Does minor home occupation need a, is this considered, considered minor home occupations? Minor home occupation is not allowed by right in the village?
I think you have.
Cause this isn't really retail. This isn't a year round up. No. Year round.
It's retail, but it's not year round.
What did the zoning?
Like, you're allowed, you're allowed by, by right in most of the, the zoning to do a minor home occup, that's like selling esti. It's like whittling dolls and selling it online, like you, you don't need permission.
Oh, that's it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's more like a home office.
If it, if it doesn't impact the neighborhood, all it's considered a minor home occupation, not a major home occupation.
And I did, not that I have anything to prove that, but I did feel as, I would even say like, is there a demand for this, and the neighbors were, I mean, if I need to get the signature to something, I'm happy to do that. But they worked for it, like it really wouldn't impact, like it's not, I guess my concern was, like Laurie was saying that, I think she spoke to Kirk, right? And he was saying that it would be the whole site plan thing. And I guess what I, I mean, it's not a huge money thing, but the fact that it would be, I only had like a thousand dollars, they were doing this on a shoestring just to see how it goes. So to spend a thousand on inventory and then have to pay for a site plan for something that's only a few weeks.
Do we verify the, do we verify through the bylaws that it requires?
I just went by the letter that Mr. Hank wrote.
Yeah, I don't think.
You wanna pass that down, Kristoff? Just like.
Oh, okay.
I don't see that.
I kinda wanna fact check that. That's where I would start, I would look up his, what he's referencing, the village district, cause each, there's five or six different zones and each zone has different.
Yeah, this is retail sales, this is not retail sales.
That's up to you guys to decide.
I would hope that, like, though, if this possibly could be a year, year after year thing, but it would only be during that period, Thanksgiving to Christmas.
Do you classify that as retail sales? What do you, you think that a reef shop for a month is retail sales?
Well, I, the canoe thing was, uh, kayak was only for summer months, it's a temporary.
Also seasonal, right.
I, I don't think there's a big issue here, it's just if we have to give our new approval. I'd have to go back and look at the bylaw again, but. Can we get the bylaws printed for our next meeting? Is that something you have access to?
I can go grab it now.
Let's go look at it real quick, yeah.
No, let's look at it, what it says is allowed by right in the village district. Yeah, let's look at it, what it says is allowed by right in the village district, cause if it's something that's allowed, if we can put it classified. Even if we're allowed by right, we might have to make some stipulations, I don't know.
Site plan overview for a reef business.
Yeah, that's like doing a site plan for lemonades. I mean, this seems like parking and waiting and stuff like.
Kinda like, this is not a big.
No, I.
Like this isn't.
Cause the, um, what, what, with the way the bylaws says, it says, if you're doing something out of your home that is gonna impact the neighborhood, it's called a major home occupation, if you're doing something that is a minor home occupation, it doesn't impact the neighborhood, it's called a minor.
And I think that the canoe, uh, there was issues with the, he wanted, he wanted, uh, canoes or kayaks outside on racks, it was all kinds of, it was a.
Yeah, there was some.
It was a little bit more.
And then for each part of, each district, zoning district, there's different parts that classify under major and minor.
Okay.
Um, but you're, you're considered, this would be considered a home occupation, that's the first thing. It's, it's not commercial business on a commercial lot, it's a home occu, it's a home occupation. Yeah, but it's still, just needs to be.
Use is allowed by right in the village district, recognizing that the village style development entails a mixture of uses, the planning board upon site plan approval is authorized to allow mix of residential and non-residential uses within the same building in the village districts. A single family and two-family uses are allowed by right without site plan approval. Approval for planning board, let's see, as, uh, long as the structure contains less than five thousand square feet. That's for housing, the following non, non-residential uses are allowed by right with planning board approval, retail sales, personal, service shops, including but not limited to virus, and that my phone's there, business or professional banks and other financial institutions.
I think it's just a matter that we have to approve the.
Liquor store, ice cream stand, home.
If there's no question. Home occupation minor, so, okay, so.
It says it in.
So it's say, it's saying that we, we have to, they're allowed by right, which means you, you can do it, you're not, not allowed to do it.
Right.
With site approval from the planning board. Right, I think that's all it's really. And that's so, and that's even for minor. That's essentially what we did, I think, with the kayak. But, and that's, that, and that's, and this would be considered, out of the categories under that, this would be considered minor home occupation, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
And in my opinion, the site approval should be, what, a couple of us go, go over and look at the site. What about parking? I don't think we need a plan.
So the driveway could hold at least six to seven cars in the south, cause it kinda goes, I tried to draw a little straight with the picture there, but it kinda goes out and then opens up to the top, and then there is a level grassy area off to the right.
Right.
So it, it's not, and, and clearly you can't park on the street, cause the right side of Baldenville Road and front of my house is not parking, the only other advantage, Mylar goes back to School Street, so that is all obviously parking back there too.
Could even access to the area from there.
Correct, you could just walk right through it, yeah.
Okay. Uh, what about lighting, at nighttime?
Do it now. We can improve it now.
Some, like I have a torch lighting in the driveway, which is existing, um, there's motion sent to lighting here, this would be the structure.
Cause like.
Fill out the application. Patio, but all of this would be parking, you can't see the angle, right?
That was a major home occupation, which was only allowed by special.
But this is the lot, so you would come, you're looking at, this is Baldenville Road, two oh two, you come up the driveway, this is the parking space, space here, and then this is School Street, so the right side, you can park over here as well.
Right, and you can access.
Yeah, this is just straight, it's all open.
If you had a thousand cars.
Well, it's not, that's what I'm saying, it's actually maybe a couple cars, I mean, it had a, it may not even be six, I have no idea.
Yeah, I know in a common, they don't have that many.
I make a motion to a sp, approve, the special permit.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
You're in business?
That's huge, I appreciate that, that really is a lot.
You have to pay a twenty-five dollar.
Are you taking, are you taking custom orders, or do we just stop in and buy a raise?
Oh, I'll do that. You can stop being, I mean, I would certainly be willing to do that if you really wanted, yeah, are you really, are you serious?
I am serious, yeah, we'll buy some raises, I'll buy some raises.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
And when you play that opening, just.